Good morning. I am calling to order our regularly scheduled meeting of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Elizabeth Glynn and I am the Chair of this committee. And I am joined today by Councilmembers Gordon, Conno, Bender, Andrew Johnson, Yang, Quincy Goodman, and Frye. And I believe Commissioner Pomisano will be joining us shortly. I know that we will be missing Council President Johnson today and Councilmember Warsami. I want to give my personal congratulations. He and his wife has had a baby girl and so he will not be joining us today. He has some parental duties. So, well wishes to him and his wife and their new baby girl, who I have heard that all are healthy and well. We have one discussion item today at Committee of the Whole. This is regarding an enterprise racial equity plan on supplier diversity. And this is in part in response to a staff direction that Councilmember Quincy and I authored a few months ago. And we have, I think, a whole team with us, but Deputy City Coordinator Nuria Rivera-Vandermeide will lead off our presentation and we welcome her. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. And Council Chair, Chair Glynn, and Councilmembers for the presentation. And Chair Glynn is correct that this is in response directly to -- my name is Nuria Rivera-Vandermeide, Deputy City Coordinator. This is in response to council directive that we received, the City Coordinator’s office received in October. And I ask your indulgence and that you bear with me as somebody who came new to the topic and really had to dive into our supplier diversity efforts. And there was a lot of great work that was doing it. But I really want to highlight while I am here giving an overview that the fine people, the team behind me, are really the folks who are the subject matter experts, have really been working on this and have finally, I shouldn’t say finally, have really joined together in a very collaborative way to figure out how do we move this work forward? How do we really kind of engage our collective efforts, figure out where we stand right now and move forward as a team? So, and I promise I’ve given you a presentation that is wordy and lengthy and I promise not to go over every word in the presentation, but wanted to highlight a few things as we move along. I start out with a quote or a series of quotes in the beginning. And I really just wanted to highlight these two dichotomies that we seem to find. And I was alerted that there is actually Minneapolis, or a Minnesota, I should say, trend that speaks to the first number, which is that minority-owned firms are on the rise. There was a recent report done that came out last year, in the fall of last year, by Concordia University in St. Paul and the University of Minnesota that really speaks to a rise in the past, in a five-year period of 2007, 2012, that minority-owned firms have grown exponentially, 53%, versus a slight decline in non-minority firms, which is at minus 3%. And yet, as the bottom quote illustrates, the disparity study that the city undertook in 2010 really shows that the disparity gap in our small businesses are, and the things that lead to that in terms of symptoms that we find in our labor force are really creating this gap between minority firms that seem to be on the rise both nationally and locally and how we’re not taking advantage of this within the city. As we talked about this work, the team, we found and we collectively put our heads together to think about several of the conversations we have had in a variety of forums, whether it’s in Business Made Simple conversations with focus groups that have been out in the community with businesses that we’ve heard, whether it’s just been the work that folks heard in the most recent Business Opportunities Fair that CPED held and was wildly successful. And I’m sure you can ask James Terrell about that later on if you so wish. But we’ve heard a variety of things about it’s hard to do business with the city, from just finding the opportunities, and that would be both from vendors external to the city, but also from departments. How do we know who are certified vendors? How do we expand that pool ourselves as we’re trying to do good work in the city? Concerns about payment issues that impact small businesses, and that happens unfortunate in bureaucracies, government systems, that sometimes the time in which it takes to pay vendors is lengthy and that will disproportionately impact either our subcontractors or our small businesses. And how do we figure that out on the back end of some of our payment systems? Not knowing how to figure out really the detail of our historic spend data so that perhaps figuring out how to match opportunities and uses between what the city buys and how what the vendors are out there. And so, a variety of efforts, including the fact that some of this work is divided amongst our departments. We have a lot of the work that happens in procurement, which is within Finance and Property Services, versus some of the work that’s done with certification, that’s done in civil rights, and how do we kind of create systems where some of that can be done more seamlessly? And so, those are some of the initial findings that really point to overall a lack of alignment and tools that make this work tremendously complex. To give a little context in history, and I know that Chair Glynn has been, and Councilmember Quincy have been working on this issue for many years now, and some of our newer councilmembers, I’m sure, know this, but the city actually had a 2010 disparity study that really found strong evidence of adverse and frequently statistically significant disparities between minority and female participation in business enterprise. The result of that were recommendations that came out of that 2010 study, and I’ve just highlighted the main gist of this there. But the two tracks were to increase the use of race and gender conscious policies and procedures, and that is where the creation of the existing SUBP, the Small and Underlived Business Program, came into account, and also to augment race and gender neutral initiatives. An aha moment for me as I was learning about this work is that really the disparity study tells us that while we have to take some measures now to figure out how do we bridge and target those disparities, the ultimate goal is to come into a time in which we’re really focused on race and gender neutral initiatives. That’s really where we want to end up. And for me, that really speaks to concentrating on our small businesses in general, because we know that when we concentrate on small businesses as a whole, that that’s where the bulk of our minority-owned and women-owned firms are. But for the moment, we have these huge disparities and that’s where we continue to make head rows with our current programs. The SUBP program, and I think I’ve got the, sorry, I apologize, I’ve got two initials inverted in the slides, really is something that contract compliance takes a hard look at, and they set goals for our contracts, as you see there, primarily over $100,000, but also within the $50,000 range for variety. And again, we’ve set aspirational goals. The city council has adopted aspirational goals for 25%, and that’s divided out into our minority-owned firms and our women-owned firms. I wanted to include a little bit of information as we’ve been doing this work, is a current vendor profile, and that’s 8,500 approximately total city vendors. Of those 15 are MNUCP certified, and MNUCP is the Minnesota Unified Certification Program. It is the single currently, single certification source that the city uses to certify its vendors as small and disadvantaged businesses. It is the source that’s used by, and again, we can send you additional information for it, but it is a program by which the Met Council, City of Minneapolis, the Minneapolis Airport Commission, and the Minnesota Department of Transportation participate in to certify their vendors. There’s additional information in our procurement applications. And what we found there too is that there are vendors who are self-identifying. I don’t say self-certifying, because that’s not what we do right now, but they self-identify as small businesses, women-owned businesses, and minority businesses. So, I include that statistic because it’ll bear on some of the work that we’ve included in the work plan about how to kind of bridge that gap and explore possible additional opportunities for certification. As even the MNUCP website says, “One size certification does not fit all,” and there are perhaps different alternatives that may help us increase participation in certification programs as we move forward. I know that contract compliance provides council with a quarterly snapshot and an annual report on their contract compliance effort, so I won’t belabor this point, but we just wanted to throw up some slides about some of the outcomes that they see as they do their work. And again, I won’t talk too much about this slide, except to say that I know that certification is one of the issues that we’ve really wanted to concentrate and look more at. And so, I’ll give you a quick overview, but to note that our team is really looking at additional best practices and some additional programs. We’ve got a meeting set up soon with our partners in the state who have a targeted group, Economically Disadvantaged Veteran-Owned Program, to see what that is. We’ve spoken to our colleagues in St. Paul, and they use a CERT program to do their certification. And then, we’ve been using MNUCP, but have been open to thinking about other certifications for different categories of businesses. So, this group will be looking at that as we move forward. One of the main things that we really needed to do, and perhaps one of the advantages, Chair Glynn, of having Tessa City Coordinator with this, is that it brought, in bringing me onto the work, it brought fresh eyes. This was not something that I needed to do at Regulatory Services, per se. And in this new role, it was, I think, helpful to convene folks and to say, “Let’s find a single place and figure out what the current state is. Where is our work happening?” And so, we started to convene and figure out where all our collective efforts were. And to be honest, it was a really good effort, because it turns out that nobody had all the information about the entire process. So, what you see here in the current state slide is really kind of a high level, and this will be iterative as we continue to move along and in the process, a high level, where are we now? And how do we use where are we now to identify those gaps? And one of those gaps, and it’s highlighted in light green, I think you might be able to see it on your own slides, is this kind of 50,000 to 100,000 mark. And that’s where there’s some additional look into programs, such as target market programs, that I think would be an interesting approach to figure out how does that fit into the city’s structure as we move forward. We’ve also been looking a lot at insurance and bonding requirements and figuring out what does the city do? And I know that Chair Glynn and Councilmember Quincy have been apprised a bit about our efforts to look comparatively at other jurisdictions about that, to see if that is a barrier and to see if we’ve got some discretion in what do we do with our insurance and bonding requirements. We’ve just updated and received some additional requirements that Sandy Christensen from our Finance and Property Services offices has collected from other jurisdictions. And so, we are taking a hard look and figuring out if we can make any adjustments to what we do as a city, because we know that sometimes those are barriers as well. As we look into the work, and part of the update was to provide council with a one-year and a five-year plan, and we’ve attempted to do so as we’ve looked at this in the past few months. And we really are excited, or at least I speak for myself, and hopefully the team concurs, excited about the possibilities of the work moving forward. The project timeline that you see in the next two pages are really a high-level overview of where we plan to go as we move forward, and then knowing that we will have some annual updates, which is part of also staff direction, but also, I think, a really good checkpoint, a pulse check for ourselves to know where we are and to make sure we’re moving the work forward. And in that, and I’m going to highlight it less on the project timeline, but I’m going to move forward a bit, we’re really talked about some specific tasks and opportunities that will allow us to see some outcomes, that I think everybody will be interested in doing that. As we look at this particular slide, and there’s two additional about the work plan, but we think that concentrating on this first page is really the bulk, and it’s on page 11, really looking at some of the initial actions, not just kind of high-level work project timeline, but looking at some of the specific actions that we are going to be taking and some of the anticipated outcomes, which tells us why we’re doing this work. And one of the first things we need to do is really to do that analysis of historic spending. It is critical for us to know what that baseline is. And we’ve now have a new, a few new models in Comet, which is our new system in Finance and Property Services, that we’re going to be able to implement and get at the bulk, and I, we think, the bulk of the information. We could not do that before, because our technology was frankly just too constraining. And now, we’ve got some additional opportunities to use new software, new modules to figure out what that looks like. I’ve put at the bottom just a description of what those new Comet modules could do for us, but we think that’s the start of doing this analysis, that if we have a baseline of two-year spending, we will then really be in a better position to figure out what it is that the city does, where does it spend its money, where are those opportunities, how do we match then to vendors? And by doing that, we’ll then, as we continue the work, be able to couple that and match outside vendors and do a little bit more targeted outreach that will hopefully bring more people into the city as we move along. From that analysis, kind of stems a variety of other work, which is defining and identifying those categories and supplier terms definitions, having a common definition across our departments, I think, would also be helpful, as sometimes we found that what civil rights or the Contract Compliance Division in civil rights calls one thing, our finance folks call something different. The other, I would say, discrepancy that we found, and it’s something that will be part of this training, is that once we’re able to unify some of those descriptors, we can also do better training for our staff, as we know we have folks in departments that are responsible for some of this purchasing and this outreach. And the codes that they use, which would allow us to better monitor this, are often inconsistent. And so, creating processes that will allow us to actually retrain folks, and particularly now the opportunity that new modules offer us to do that, will allow us to really help departments too, and those buyers in departments, along with those that are in procurement, to start identifying things better and consistently, so that when we pull queries and we can continue to do this work, we’ll actually know that we’re talking about the same things throughout. Again, in this year, we plan to start looking and with the basis of what that looks like and those opportunities, to really figure out and expand our certification options. For me, there is no such thing that’s off the table from self-certification and what that could look like and what we have to make sure that it contains, because there’s also abuse of that, we’ve seen in other jurisdictions, sometimes when people are just allowed to self-identify, that it may not always be the case that they are 51% minority or female-owned. So, taking a look at those options, but then also looking at some of the existing programs, I think, will be really helpful as we move forward. And we can move some of those suggestions forward, even while we continue to expand the program and look at best practices. I think there’s an ability to bring some things forward in this year, that we don’t have to wait for subsequent years to do that. And then, finally, we talked about developing a target market program, which is something that I know that we’ve spoken about with Chair Glynn and Councilmember Quincy about, and figuring out where to look at that gap and is that gap, is the 50,000 to 100,000 gap the right one? But it’s really aimed at looking at small businesses and again, augmenting these race and gender neutral initiatives and figuring out how do we support small businesses as we do work in the city. Again, additional information on some of those, again, higher level on the work plan as we start to go into, finish out year one and start to go into year two, will be continued cross-jurisdictional efforts, figuring out really how do we communicate this to departments? And there’s a two-phased approach to this kind of portal thought, which is, we can do something immediately, and we’ve got staff and we’ve contacted IT to work on a SharePoint, where we have actually one singular list, not one that resides in contract compliance and not one that resides in procurement, but a singular list by which we can really cross-reference and have, know what vendors are certified. Right now too, if departments individually want to find, “I want to find a certified vendor for X,” they’re directed to the MNUCP site, where they should try to cross-check themselves and find somebody. And there’s, we believe there’s better ways to do that, quicker ways for departments to access that, and we can do that for them and help people do that quicker. A longer-term view, and it’s something that we’ve talked extensively about, and we’ve looked across the river. St. Paul has been doing a lot of this great work. It’s creating a vendor portal, an outreach portal that’s external-facing, and that is something that we will take into account as we look into the future years and figuring out how do we do this? How do we make it easier for businesses to really do business in the city? What tools, what resources can we give vendors? How do we quickly allow vendors to take a look at what opportunities there are throughout and where they can really find, perhaps, think about those opportunities and where they have not been thinking entrepreneurially, maybe in looking at those opportunities, will give folks a kind of a spark to come into a program like BTAP that the city has, that really gives great resources to new and small businesses to really figure that out. In this year’s round of funding, and again, James is here, I don’t mean to steal his thunder, and you can ask him more questions, but I know that in this round of funding, BTAP has received monies to assist nonprofits and give them bonus points if they assist folks in getting certification across the city. And so, really exciting outcome from the BTAP program all around and things to look forward to. We also will look, and this is something that will be ongoing as we continue to move this, and I, it should come at no surprise to most people that we need to always look at our current policies and practices and figure out what we could improve on. And so, we will, throughout the thread of this work, throughout the years to come, we will be continuing to look at what that looks like, from the bonding and insurance work that we talked about, to the approvals, the payment times, to how we use the Permanent Review Committee in the RFP contracts, those contracts that are over $100,000, and figuring out what that looks like. And so, we’ll continue to thread that through, and as that comes forward, we will continue to highlight the results of that work. The purchasing portal was something I had already mentioned a little bit earlier, which is that find a supporter, how do we match, and how do we put more resources there? So, that also becomes part of our work. So, I know a lot of things kind of talked about as we think about a work plan moving forward. Happy to stand for questions, happy to volunteer our folks behind me for some specific questions, because they really have been doing great work. And it, now, I’m privileged in the City Coordinator’s office to bring and convene those work efforts into a collaborative movement, so that we can have sort of, in the collective impact model, the benefit of various departments moving forward.
All right. Just a second, I was, been taking notes in your presentation here to remind myself of questions. So, just as a reminder to councilmembers, after we have some discussion, our action will actually be to approve this work plan, to kind of give it the support of the city council as the team moves forward. Also, just generally, I want to say thank you to the Coordinator’s Office for stepping forward to provide leadership. I think this kind of reminds me of some discussions we have had in other areas of the city where we have had great work happening in individual departments, great staff doing great work, but sometimes that’s not taken to the enterprise-wide level through the proper attention to how do we coordinate and give that message that we’re not just doing individual projects in individual departments, we’re trying to create a system that affects the city as a whole. And so, I really appreciate that the Coordinator’s Office is helping to work with expert staff who bring their talent and then can help coordinate those efforts and bring it to an enterprise-wide level. We have councilmembers starting to get in queue, and I will have some questions and comments as well, but Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, and I’m glad that we’re going to develop a plan and very supportive of seeing this move forward. I have a couple of questions and some comments. I’m curious about how we are engaging potential vendors, women-owned or minority-owned vendors who are interested in this, and make sure that they’re included as we develop the plan and that we move forward and there’s an engagement process there. And I apologize if I missed it, if you mentioned it during the presentation, but there was a lot of information to take in, and I may have.
Chair Glynn, Councilmember Gordon, you may not have missed it, but it certainly recalls, I hear somebody from my former department saying that I tend to give a lot of information. It’s a lot to react to sometimes. But I will say that two things on that effort, is that there is a lot of already outreach going to vendors, between the Business Opportunity Fairs that CPED had this summer, Contract Compliance held their second annual contractor training, and there was extensive training resources, and there actually continue to be onsite for contractors on how to do business with the city. But as to this particular effort, I hearken to one of the recommendations that came out of the disparity study, which was really to appoint a contracting task force. And it’s one thing that I believe that we’re going to be looking at in terms of that communications plan. That contracting task force, really what it meant in the disparity study, was a group of folks, both internal and external folks, to start to look at this issue and engaging our external vendors and our business community in coming up with those ideas on how to better enhance our certification and our, just the general work of increasing vendors in our city. So, that will be part of this work plan, is to create that group that will continue to assist us as we develop those issues. I will also say there’s some other work, and part of this throughout is aligning it with existing work that’s happening in the city. The portal concept, as somebody who’s been working on the Enterprise Land Management System, ELMs, we have created another group that now kind of segues that divide between the Enterprise Land Management System, which is really the technology of how do we do our work, and I concentrate mostly on business licensing there, because that’s where that ends, and a group that comes out of the Business Made Simple Study. And we’ve heard a lot of focus groups there. And so, figuring out how to bridge those two, there has been a group formed in the Coordinator’s Office that brings both the technology and the business expertise to that table. We will be aligning those efforts with this work as well, because we’ve already got business, input from business members in some of that work. So, it’ll be, it will be central to our work to make sure that we actually not just collaborate internally, but that we include that vendor focus as we move forward.
Well, I agree that it would be crucial to include that focus, and also, there’s a lot of expertise out there in terms of people maybe in the nonprofit or the private sector who’ve been trying to solve this problem for a long time. And they’ve started businesses to try to connect smaller businesses or even individuals to jobs and work with government especially, in our case, because we’re talking more about our money that’s going out. But I hope, I want us to take advantage of some of that expertise. This has certainly been a topic that’s come up again and again and again over the last decade or so that I’ve been here. And so, I know that in CPED, there’s a lot of expertise there with employment, but also, we have our partner, our collaboration with everybody in, and this is a topic that they discuss a lot. The issue of certification, I can’t believe how many people are trying to figure out how to solve that. And there’s definitely varying opinions. There’s lots of vendors and contractors who won’t necessarily want all sorts of flexibility and differences in one certification here, one certification there, and one there. So, we’ve been driving towards, could we, could we share certifications? Could we have a common understanding of it to make it easier for the vendor? So, that’s the thing to think about, although I appreciate the creativity that you’ve expressed. And that’s more of a comment, you don’t necessarily have to respond to that, but you, but you can also. I did want to also point out, one of the things that I think is helpful for the council to see and remember is that we spend, I think it’s over $6 million in procurement. We spend a lot of money on this, and I recall this nice graphic from 2012 that showed the total amount that we actually spend, about $6 million, and then that amount that was actually going to women-owned or minority-owned was about $100,000. So, it’s a very small percentage. And one of the things that would be nice to see in the plan is if we could have that big picture to say, “Okay, here’s the money that we put out for contracting, for our public works projects and other things like that. We’re building a new building, a new road, a lot of money goes there, and we subcontract out, but we also have all this money that we’re spending to get our paper, our pencils, our banking services, all of these other things, and our IT services, a lot of money.” And so, if we can maybe set some goals about what we want, how we want to see that money change and where it should go and what to do, that will help us, and then we might understand more why we need to unbundle some contracts, why relying on two big banks for all our financial services might not really be helping us reach some other goals. And the last thing I want to, and I did, you did have some interesting numbers here about the number of vendors. I forget how many thousands of vendors we actually work with, and actually, I think it said only 15 of them were actually certified. And then, there was another 700 or something that self-identified, which is interesting, and so, we want to look at that. And I appreciate that. Now, I forgot my other thought about unbundling, but maybe I’ll come back, because there’s certainly a lot more that we can do, and I’m glad that we’re, we’re starting to work on, work on this.
Chair Glynn, Councilmember Gordon, to come back to some of the Chair Glynn, Council Member Gordon, to come back to some of the points that you made, certainly, and part of, as we look at certification, reciprocal certification is something that we're taking a look at, and I was remiss in saying that as part of our participation in the Government Alliance for Race and Equity, we've also just been having, or I shouldn't say just, I have just been involved in conversations, although Contract Compliance has been involved in those for a while now, where we have gotten together, Met Council, St. Paul, ourselves, we just had a conference last week, and we will be doing these on a monthly level, where the focus is nothing but, we have convened a small subcommittee to think about certification period. And so, we were just talking about a variety of different options and opportunities, from thinking about doing a regional fair perhaps next time, instead of every individual agency or jurisdictions having an opportunity fair solely, can we open that and broaden that up to be a regional fair? But reciprocal certification options will certainly be something that is, has already been included in the work plan. To your point about that funnel diagram, and I'm familiar with it, one of the things that I hope that this group, as we continue to look into that effort, is perhaps the nuance of those 15 that were, and that's just through, I should say, Q3 of 2015. The larger list that is currently MNUCP certified is over 2,100, I believe it's 2,150, from the last database that I downloaded from the site a few days ago. And so, cross-checking those, which is part of this work, cross-checking those across the vendors that we have, those 8,500-something vendors, was something that was done two years ago, and it was manual. And so, hopefully now, we have better tools to do that and to cross-check quicker, and to have actually that one solitary list that I was mentioning about immediately having on SharePoint, where we actually can expand and tell departments, these expanded list of folks are actually MNUCP certified.